So we will open the August 8th, 2023, meeting of the Air Planning Board. First item is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve the agenda.
I'm going to do it after the motions. So I got a motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion, yes. I'd like to make a couple of changes. The first is, I'd like to have a conversation about an additional board member. An additional member from our board is required for this Devon Subcommittee. So that's another, an item I want to get under General Business. And then, under Administrative Matters, I want to include a discussion of the Site Plan Approval and Special Permit Template that Danny has brought before us. Is there anything else we need to amend on the agenda?
Do we want to talk about the request on the Advisory Work Group? Or should we let that go until we have all the members here?
Oh, I think we'll open it.
Okay.
Start this conversation, just as, and Daniel will just tell us what it means. And then, I think we're going to end up continuing it because, want to see, you know, what Nathan and Julie have to say. That said, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the agenda as discussed?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. The three of us say approve the agenda. How do we appoint Julie Murray to the CPC, or reappoint her?
I moved, I moved to appoint Julie Murray to the CPC.
Yeah, I second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yep, done.
Don't come to the party. You end up cleaning up.
No, no, she knows.
I know. I'm kidding.
Just for anyone watching.
It needs to be, it's a formality.
Julie's expressed her intent to continue her participation. We have the Advisory Work Group for the Stormwater Utility Fund. And Danny just presented to us a memo or letter from Dan, Dan from Skowtway. And, oh, I don't think it'll take just a minute just to read into the record. So I'll do that. "Hi Danny, the following would be great. The Air DPW is seeking a volunteer from the Planning Board to assist a working group in evaluating a stormwater utility fund. In the early 2010s, the town voted to create a stormwater utility fund. However, when a funding mechanism was prevented, sentiment at the time was to fund stormwater from the general fund, that is, the tax base. Ultimately, the stormwater utility fund was dissolved by the Select Board and Town Meeting votes. The town has increased responsibility with its stormwater permitting and understanding of its infrastructure. The infrastructure is especially better understood through the creation of a stormwater asset management plan. This involved inspections, prioritization of improvements to critical infrastructure, and importantly, costs. The Select Board supported and Town Meeting authorized capital funds for evaluation of a stormwater utility fund. The mission of the Stormwater Utility Advisory Work Group will be to assist the town of Air in developing a stormwater utility fund, including but not limited to reviewing and recommending policy decisions in the development of the stormwater utility fund, review and recommendation of the funding mechanisms for the stormwater utility fund, coordination with the Rate Review Committee. Thanks, Dan." And this is dated Tuesday, August 8th. So Danny, tell us a little bit, do you know any more information about? I don't even know. Can you tell us what a utility fund looks like?
So, this is the first time I'm really dealing with a utility fund. And so, I only had a brief chance to talk to Dan today about this when we had our meeting. And briefly, what he did say is, we were talking about other stormwater around the town. And they want to potentially look at figuring out, so the utility fund would basically be used to help provide maintenance, keep, upkeep for a, for any public stormwater that they maintain, like any detention stations that need upgrading or fixing any inlets, outlets. It would be for that, you know, cleaning out catch basin, stuff like that. But he also wanted to discuss, so there's a possibility of the, of adding myself to the, to this working group. But Dan wanted to look into that a little further to see if the town planner can sit on the working group like this? Or does the Planning Board member need to sit on it? So he's, he's going to look into that. And then, I, so I told him at the August 22nd meeting, we'll be able to make a vote when we have also Julie and Nate, when the full board is here.
That seems reasonable to me. What are the, Jeff, Ken, what do you think?
Good with that?
I'm good with it.
Yeah, it's been something I've been watching quietly from, it's going to form up. So, I know Dan's looking for lots of people from lots of different parts of the town.
Oh, good.
Yeah. He's doing a pretty good, a pretty broad reach out to folks, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. So, the, the final thing in General Business is the second board member for the Devins Subcommittee. Jeff, do you want to volunteer twice? Can we, can we?
I'm happy to, but I was unaware that there was a, what that, the makeup of the committee is requiring two members of the Planning Board.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so.
And their first meeting is tomorrow evening at 5:00.
On this one, Carly had sent me an email just letting me know that there still was another, opening for another board member. But I did let her know that, you know, that Julie and Nate weren't going to be here. So, I figured we'd wait till the next meeting so that we can have everyone else in case one of, one of the other members may want to also be on this.
It's, it's not clear how much activity there's going to be. Those can be monthly, bi-monthly, quarterly, stuff like that at this point. We're going to file the structure tomorrow night. Hopefully, we'll have more information about it tomorrow, for the next, for the ahead. I will happily report back to the board.
Appreciate it.
That would be very helpful. Our next meeting is the 20?
Second.
Second. I'll be in town. Yes, I'll happily bring back a report on that. If you want to put it on the agenda.
That's great. You know, regarding the Stormwater Utility Fund, if Nathan and Julie aren't interested, I would submit myself, you know, as a candidate for that. I would, I'm hoping that maybe someone else will take on the additional role for Devins. That's, that's, I'm just being, laying my cards on the table. It's not that I don't care about Devins, but there's only so many committees, so. Just a little in the back of our minds.
It's, it's almost as if no one thinks about how many committees want somebody from the Planning Board.
Yep, I get it.
That's a challenge for us.
I'd rather have that than be in the dark, though. So, that's, that's a good thing. Okay.
I get the feeling Mr. Diskin's got the cat.
Got the what?
Looks like you want, looks like the, the cat's got your tongue. You want to say something about it.
Now, I probably will not go on, not volunteer for the Devins also because I'm involved in a lot of stuff right now.
Yeah. That's fair enough. But they're simple things.
Yeah, right.
That senior center, just, it'll cite itself. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, I'd like a motion to open the continued public hearing for site plan special permit and stormwater for DMG Investments 201, 205 West Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the continuance?
Aye.
Chair. What, what's the matter?
The African. Say one, a few words.
I thought we were going to, oh, I, I, okay.
We're just opening it.
We're just going to open it. And then you can say a few words, and then we'll, we'll, we'll take the vote for the continuance. So, we will, so, I'm sorry, I heard two ayes. Chair votes aye, so it's, it's open. Tom, would you just name, et cetera, approach the table? And Keon, you can come up too.
Sure.
Good evening, Board Members. Tom Gibbons for DMG Investment. And with me tonight is Keon Hamel, who you met at the last meeting.
Good evening.
We know that there's two members absent, so we're going to continue to the next meeting. Just, a comment I was hoping to plant in, in seed here is that we're hoping that on the 22nd, that the board will have fine tuned what the peer review is that they're going to be looking for, what is going to be involved, because we hope to get that ball rolling fairly quickly. And I know that the publication went out for the special permit for the aquifer protection, and that'll be heard on the 22nd.
That's an important reminder. Do we have to do a public advertisement for the special permit?
Yeah, so, so we're, we're.
Okay, and the second thing that you brought up was regarding the review. Is that in process?
So, we are going to wait until the 22nd for the board to make a vote on that.
Okay.
But I have list, I, we have a list of the, of the potential.
You have the scope.
You have the scope, Doc.
Yes.
Is that, does that meet what you were thinking of, Tom?
Yeah, we're just hoping that at the next meeting, the board will, will make a decision on.
That's the goal.
What they want for peer review, because I think some of it probably, well, we would say isn't necessary. But anyway, we'll discuss it then, but hopefully we'll make a decision that night on peer review.
Sounds reasonable to me. Ken, Jeff?
Well, just to make a brief comment. We've only talked about one, in general, one peer review, I believe. That's traffic and parking.
There is an additional one that was raised, but I don't want to talk too much as to what, just because we're continuing.
I thought there were two as well.
Yeah. I can tell you later.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, we'll be happy if next meeting we, the board makes a decision on it. And that would be great.
I guess, yeah, so I guess it's a two-part question. One, is a peer review considered necessary? And then, if it is, what is the scope of that peer review?
Okay.
Because we just want to get the ball rolling on that.
We'll talk about that at the August 22nd.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Alright. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. You're in for a short night tonight, I'd love it, it looks like.
Alright. I hope you didn't have to travel far.
Thank you.
Take care.
I'd like a motion to continue the public hearing to the next meeting.
Like, move to continue the public hearing for, and I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of me.
Sorry.
Yeah, what happened?
For the community public hearing, site plan, permanent special permit, Aqua for Overley District, and stormwater for DMG Investments 201, 205 West Main Street, to the meeting on August 20?
Second.
2023.
Second.
Any discussion?
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good week, have a good two weeks. So, any, do we have project status updates?
Yes.
We do. Excellent. We're looking forward to this.
So, today I spoke with the attorney, Bob Collins?
Oh, yes.
Yes, for Stratton Hill. They have, out of the country. So, they're anticipating to being, actually opening up the public hearing at the first October meeting, which is October 10.
Oh, so we're not, not, not next, next meeting?
It decided because of the deadline for the legal notices to, for everything. We had already crossed, we had already passed it. That's why I had, I had reached out to actually attorney, uh, Gibbons.
That's okay.
Attorney Gibbons, on Monday, getting to figure out the continuance for the 22nd. Getting a determined date so that we can get the legal notice for the updated special permit. That had that, the previous notice said special permit for parking, which it was actually for the aquifer, and those were waivers. So, we had to update that, get the legal notice in the newspaper, as well as get a butters notices.
And that's for DMG?
Yeah, that's for DMG. But the applicant, Collins had not reached out to me, and I hadn't gotten contact with him for the 22nd. So, yet today was already, we were past that deadline.
Oh, so we can't even, oh, okay. I got it. Alright. But, but you.
Wait a minute, let's back up a little bit. So, we're going to have, this Friday and the following Friday, there'll be the announcement for the aquifer protection for these DMG.
That is correct.
So that's easy. That's done. Simply putting, they've already opened, we already opened, we did not open. We only have received the documents for the Stratton Hill.
Correct.
That's right. We have not opened it yet.
That is, that is correct.
So, there, so, to explain, there's a missing piece of information. Bob Collins called me earlier today.
He told me.
And I told him to call Danny, but I was, because at first I was, I was amenable to the idea because the initial idea was to open it so that we can get the whole peer review process in motion, and then.
Motion, it's in motion now, right?
Well, further it. And then, we could regroup in October when they're back. And I thought, yeah, that sounded reasonable to me. But, so Danny just gave me new information I hadn't realized earlier. Thank you. That's why I asked him to call you. That's one of the reasons. So, yeah, well, so we intend to open it with the first meeting in October, is the plan?
So, we're basically saying we need to do a butter notification and.
For the October 10.
Advertisement for the, legal advertisement for the subdivision.
Yes. For the October 10.
For the general, definitive subdivision. I should have said, not general.
Yes.
Definitive subdivision.
Is it called definitive subdivision? I don't know, I don't know OSRD.
It's definitive, yeah.
Yeah, just, just making sure we got the language correct, guys.
So Stratton Hill, DMG, and then so many other projects, is, is.
So, on top of that, Curly Circle, which is the old 54, 56 Littleton Road. They, we, we did not put them on the agenda for today because there is still some open issues on, on the project because it is an OSRD. There was a conservation restriction that was recorded, but a baseline monitoring report, we have not seen yet. We haven't seen that it was actually completed. And there was still some other conditions within the, the permit that was given to them on some boundaries for the open space that I haven't, that hasn't been confirmed, that has been completed. So, we didn't want to go through the bond reduction portion yet.
Until we can reduce the bond.
Exactly.
Got it. Thank you, Danny.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. Any, there's no new news on Panther Place, or, you know? I didn't think so. It looks like it's in progress.
If I can just, you know, unofficially, Curly Circle, I drove by the other day. I was over there, I was looking for a hot dog. Next week she'll be back. And it turns out that it actually fits. It's not overpowering. They finished the last few buildings.
Yeah.
The ones on the right, yeah. Doesn't, it's not way out of scale, in my opinion.
No, we hope not.
Yeah, no. It's, if you look at it, and then you try to look across the street, it's.
Looks fine.
It's great. It, it, it's just, it's hard to see when you're standing in, in empty space, you know?
Oh, yeah.
It's very difficult to see. And I'm, I'm, I bang the drum again and again and again. Three, 400 feet of road, with how many units on it?
Yeah.
Paying taxes? Yeah.
Big deal.
That's an infrastructure win.
It sure is.
And driving by Curly, I was going out yesterday to get something over at the shop and save. And I thought, I'll drive back the other way and drive in, and I didn't do it. But that looks like it's got two or three started down the hill. A little behind the ones right on Washington Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Four.
Are there four? I, I can only see two or three from the road when I was driving by, so. Yeah. I'll drive in once. It looks, that looks in great shape. And Shake the Mill Pond is, is he finished?
Uh, I don't, he's, I know he's getting close because I was talking to Dan about that.
And they patched the road that was left over. They had done some horizontal directional drilling.
Oh, yes.
To connect the sewer with a force main. And I came around the corner the other day, and lo and behold, they fixed it.
Through your request.
We made the request through Dan and through our, our, our planning department. Yeah, no, it's just, it makes sense. When he comes back to do the, the finish, send a truck over there and just fix it. He's more than happy to do it, from what I understand.
Yep.
So, that road will be in much better shape.
So he'll end up with the same, Heather, can we ask you a question?
Of course you can.
So, that's Mr. Aho at the Shake a Mill Pond. He'll end up with the same situation on the, on the CR.
Uh, yeah, so that CR has, has not been recorded. I don't have a baseline yet.
So he's even further behind.
He's further behind. Unfortunately, the state didn't have anybody reviewing conservation restrictions for a number of years, so a lot of them got backlog.
Yes.
The commission will be double checking with everything on that. I'm about to put an agenda up. We can add it tomorrow. To double check to make sure that's all set. And then, I've been contacting his attorney, same with Joel Levine's attorney for his as well, because neither of those are complete at this time. And the majority of the documents are ready. It's the CR, the language is done. It's the baseline that we don't have anything done on any of them yet.
I'm wondering, have the baseline studies been, has baseline monitoring been done? It's just not been reviewed, or is the?
It ha, no one's seen it, so we don't know if it's been done.
We just don't know.
Got it, okay.
And according to the state, you can't record a CR until the baseline's done. So I have no idea how.
So it may be.
I don't know if it's got done.
It may be done, and just in the queue somewhere, we can't figure it out.
Well, does it get recorded, right?
Exactly.
So it's in the queue of whoever, I think OXFO, unfortunately, I think is doing all of the ones in town right now.
Yep.
So he could just, maybe just, you know, spend a week here and get them all done.
Okay.
Would be nice. And then I can start monitoring them and then be here.
Thank you.
Did you read the decision on those, regarding the CR, what the decision said, our decision?
Uh, so I've only looked at, I was only looking at Curly Circle because that one was coming for a street, they're working on a street acceptance and bond reduction. I haven't had a chance to look at, review the others yet.
We had something in there originally about certificates of occupancy.
Yes.
That were related to the.
That's actually, yeah, so that actually happened on Curly Circle as well. The problem with that was that because the, the state did not have a reviewer for CRs.
So we let it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. That's what I thought.
That would be an undue burden on.
No, I, I, I talked about it before, but in a way of reviewing it, I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, the CR was supposed to be in place prior to the first occupancy permit.
Yeah. That was in pretty good condition.
Yeah.
Doesn't work godfellow way.
It was like, it was like the sidewalk would need to be in place before we approved the gas station that would still not have been built by now. You can't put aside, state land. Good luck.
I think for future.
That was an undue burden.
For future would be final occupancy.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. So the next item.
Wait a minute.
What?
I have one thing on, he's not finished with updates, I don't think.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, Danny.
No, that's okay.
You gotta step all over you. Go ahead.
That's, that's okay. 2729 Harvard Road.
Yes.
So, I'm hoping to have a meeting with the, with GPR and Ted Maxant and the Building Commissioner on Thursday. Just waiting on confirmation on the, on, for the meeting.
I've seen the email exchanges. Thank you.
So, that's, and we'll be discussing the, basically, everything that came out of our land use meeting.
Can you mention one thing that came out of the land use meeting that was eye-opening to me? That was something new, and that was the aquifer protection line. Turns out Maxant's lot is extremely deep.
Yes.
And it goes into a wetland back there, which then ends up being close enough to the Barnum Road Pump Station.
Yes.
Of Pell Wells to create a small piece that's in the aquifer protection zone.
Yes.
None of us picked that up until, I don't know, you picked it up from the map, or did you talk?
I was, I was, so I happened to be looking at the, trying to look back at the history of the property and what was cleared through pictometry and all that. And happened to look at the zoning and saw that the back portion of the property was within the aquifer protection district. And based on how the line is drawn, it doesn't encompass that whole pond, wetland back there. It's just the back portion of it, which, in theory, if it gets into the water, it's going to there. So, that's one thing we're going to be discussing as well.
Very interesting.
Puts another layer of, you know, government control on a pretty small job.
And the problem with that as well is, so the bylaw states that only the area within the aquifer protection district can, the bylaw applies to. So, only that back little portion applies to it.
But he's got other things he's got to come.
Yeah.
To the table on, so.
Which is.
It's one more on the laundry list of things he has to come to the table.
Which is what, the full list we'll be discussing.
That's great.
Okay, great.
Um, and I think that was it for.
I have one.
Okay.
So, this is new to Danny, and just a point for us to think about. When we did the condominiums, the first set of condominiums on Central Ave, the seven-unit building, I think it was. Remember, the planning board needed to do a final site walk and sign off on the site plan. It was complete. We accepted the site plan. We met with the developer.
Yes.
He had a punch list. He finished the punch list, and we signed off. We were not informed, and we never did the next one. The four-unit condominium. We've never had a final site walk. We never thought about it until I thought about it recently. But we need to do that, so we need to have a final site walk. And that was supposed to, the reason for the site walk in the first group was so he could get his first occupancy, certificate of occupancy. And I think the same thing applies to Alex's project, I believe the gentleman's name is. So just, can you check on that?
Yeah, do you happen to know the addresses of those?
I mean, it's got to be right in the files somewhere, but it's.
It's one of the Central Ave.
Central Ave.
Okay, Central Ave.
Actually, Charlie's office will know.
Yeah, I did, I.
60?
Is that 60?
I've forgotten.
It's just that way, that way I know exactly what to look, where my file is.
It's 60 to 62, I think, but yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, Central Ave.
But it's a four-unit building. You know, they had to come before us for site plan. We went through quite a lot. We had site visits and.
Yeah.
And Thursday mornings worked well for me still. Do they still work for you?
Yeah, not this Thursday. I have a trip to make. Anyway.
He's allowed to take trips.
So that's one thing that I had, because I think it's just familiar, you know, trying to make you familiar with the fact that we need to do a final walkthrough and stuff like that. And somehow, we, and it slipped by, so, need to do that.
And one of the things we were discussing, I was telling Danny about this, is a, when Mr. Wetzel was here, he was looking at a, at a latitudinal permitting system. In other words, building would have access to it, planning would have access to it, DPW would have access to it. And when you went out on the site and you filled out a form, it would inform everybody by email, but it would also put on the calendar what needs to be done, what next steps need to be done.
Program management.
So, it's, yeah, basically, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a program manager. Was part of, was part of that. And that was something that died on the vine when Mark and Joanne were here. And I think.
So, no, actually, so we're.
The DPW has online permitting software. They're transitioning it onto this to the town after the DPW.
Good, so it's still moving forward.
Yes.
Because, because the expectation is that stuff will stop falling to the press.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have my copy of outlook to make sure it gets done as.
We've actually had some discussions on that. I've had it with Dan and with Charlie about that, that the, I, the planning department shouldn't be on there just because definitely, I mean, the site plans, all permitting, anything should be going through there. That way, everything's keeping, being kept track. And also, it's, it's also easier to distribute to, information to the board members. They can always go on there, get that emailed out.
It lightens the load for the applicant, too.
It also reduces how much paper we take.
Yeah. I mean, it works for a lot, there's a lot of really good things in this, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Excellent.
We're moving into the 21st century around here.
I was kicking and screaming for three years, you know about that.
Anything else in the project status updates?
Um, no.
That's all I got. Danny has undertaken, as you see in their spreadsheets, a review of her fee schedule with that, puts them synoptically against the fees of local towns comparable, Arles, Groton, Salisbury, Littleton, Westford, Acton, Maynard, Stowe, Concord, and Sudbury. And Danny, tell, please share with the other members, what you're suggesting, the way we should go about this and et cetera.
Yeah, so, I think tonight we can kind of just merely discuss, you know, kind of run through some of these, each of these sections, which, what each town does, and how much each of them are costing for their application. I think before we make any decisions, we would wait until the next meeting when we have all of the board members, so that we can kind of run through this with, with everyone as well, and hopefully today I can get an idea as to what you guys, what your opinions would be, as to what you think, because then I can grab some projects that we currently have before the board and just run those numbers into each of these to see, you know, what they would, how much they would run out, I mean, what the final application cost would be, and kind of just show you the differences between each of those scenarios.
And do we have authority for the fees, or do we just make a recommend?
Oh, we do. We do have the authority under the planning board rules and regs, the planning board just needs to have a public hearing on the fee schedule.
When did we do this last, three years ago?
It was longer than that.
Longer than that?
It was five.
Five?
Yeah, it was five years ago, I think, it was just after you and I had met in the great room.
And Danny, if there's a blank spot, like near modification or extension of a special permit, that means we currently don't have a fee for that?
Yeah, that's, that means that that town currently, or we don't, have a fee for that.
Okay. And my cursory review of it seems like we're not entirely out of line with what other towns are doing.
No.
Is that what you, kind of impression that you got?
Yeah, so that's, that's what the impression I get. The bigger differences I see are in the preliminary, definitive, and then the site plan review. That's really where the big differences I see.
It seems that we're way short on the definitive.
And, so, the preliminary, the application, the 500, is pretty comparable for most towns. It's the $50 per each lot is really where the difference kind of comes in.
Oh, for the preliminary.
Yeah, for the preliminary.
Two fifty, two hundred.
Yeah. Some towns have different measurements, like linear foot.
Linear foot of road, stuff like that.
Yeah.
And I would, I would, so, first of all, thank you very much for sending this out today and putting it all together, I thought it was really helpful. And I want to put some, I want to put a seed in your mind also, the amount of opportunity left in AER is finite. So, A, we want to be in line with what communities around us are doing, but B, there's, discussion before, being inexpensive is, I don't think the right place to be.
It's what?
It's not the right place to be.
Being what?
Being inexpensive.
Inexpensive.
I think, I think pricing it in such a way, there's economic factors on this, there's a finite amount of land, there's a finite amount of work that's going to be going on, and how are people thinking about it before they come in and doing something?
Mike? If I can weigh in with my thoughts, I think I want to make a distinction between, you know, large commercial projects and the subdivisions, OSRD, preliminary plan, definitive plan, site plan review, and the kinds of things that an ordinary resident might come to us for, you know, which might be a special permit of some kind, a modification, you know, that kind of thing, and A and R, I'd want to go light-handed with those things.
Exactly, and I was talking about the OSRD and the subdivisions?
Yeah, I thought that's...
Yeah, exactly, but no, we should, we should not be punitive.
No, absolutely not.
In a situation where a landowner, a landowner might want to redraw a line for a number of members, stuff like that.
Which we have been seeing, we've seen these kind of requests, you know, you know, just want to break it up into new lots, et cetera, and I don't want that to be a burdensome, expensive process, that doesn't seem right.
But in a situation where 30 new buildings are being built on...
That's different.
Virgin forest, that we're never going to have again, there's an opportunity there.
I agree.
And just from my experience in, in working in the private sector for a developer, application fees, most times don't deter it. I, from personal experience, in Marlboro, there was a development that I did, and it was an 18-lot commercial condominium that the cost was $20,000 for the, just for site plan review. But it's not, doesn't, it's just, right now, developers are not...
Eight hundred thousand dollars apiece at the end of the process, and they're building them for 600,000 apiece, there's some room in there.
Yeah.
For a thousand bucks upfront.
So, to, to, most developers, at least when you're coming in to do a definitive subdivision, big site plan review, most of the time, that's not going to deter you. But, you know, in looking, there's, like, Westford, the way they structure theirs, site plan review, I really liked, because they do it based on gross square footage.
Yep.
You know, that is, you know, the higher you go, the more the number changes and the higher it goes, that way, there's not, you know, if someone comes in with a 3,000-square-foot building that they want to do, they're not automatic, they're not like, it's not an absorbent amount of money for them to apply when it's a smaller development, and the bigger the development, then at that point, it's a little bit higher, and so it kind of, it adds some variableness to it.
It's a tiered structure.
And what's your opinion about a building lot versus linear foot of road for the, the plus fees?
So, it really depends on the town, I guess. Some towns allow longer dead-end roads for like subdivisions. It, it's really, so like Stratton Hill, if they were to do linear foot, that's quite the, quite the cost there, but based on lots, it's a lower cost, because there's only, I believe, thirty...
Four.
Thirty-four. So, you know, it, it really depends on how the board wants to look at subdivisions and how long they, how long of a road do you really want. Sometimes that'll deter people, you know, and make the road not as long, but sometimes...
You'd have to have quite a large fee for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I don't like long roads.
No.
With acre lots on them, it generates a cost for the, for the residents of this community.
Absolutely.
That's never covered, that will probably never be covered.
That's right.
In real dollars by the people who live on that road, and this is why we've done the density work we've been doing the last five years. I could be really wrong, but so far, I don't think I am. And that, you know, we, the four houses on the acre, at the, on Washington Street, on a corner on Washington Street, their tax bills pay for them, plus the length of lots on the roads stuck out on Pingray, just the way it works.
So, if we go to take an example of what we're talking about, Stratton Hill definitive plan, which we have been paid for already, because they must have submitted it.
Yes, they have submitted it.
Looks like it was $9,500, like 250 times 34 plus 1,000, so, $9,500, I don't know.
Are you saying that's too high?
Seems pretty reasonable, I mean, it's fair...
I think that's very, I think that's re...
I do think it's reasonable.
I, I buy that. I think that's a good price, I think that's, that's, 34 houses for 9,500 bucks.
Yeah.
Hasn't been paying taxes on the land, he's been doing a lot of stuff, you know, for a long time.
I think that, because, you know, when I think about these projects, and what we've seen is that they take a lot of time for the professionals in Town Hall, and so it is just to have a fair fee schedule, because, you know, just DPW alone, the amount of time they have to invest in, in reviewing, but it's not just DPW, it's fire, police, town planner, it's conservation, et cetera. So, yeah, so those are the things where I would expect to have a higher fee, the things that really put a burden on our, on our professionals in Town Hall. That needs to be compensated.
When we talked about this before, and we went through it, one of the things we talked about was the fact that we still have the ability to waive the fees, per request, someone can ask us to work with them, so if we're a charitable organization, or Habitat for Humanity, or somebody comes in, we do have the, I think we have the authority to waive some of the fees, a part of the fees.
I think we did with the 40B, I think, we, we did that, we waived the big chunk.
No, that didn't come to us.
It didn't come to us, but I'm saying the town...
Well, the Board of Appeals, maybe.
That's what I meant, I meant us, the board.
Yeah, planning board does have the ability to waive your fees.
So, if we determined that we were going to, you know, go up with the, I like the idea of this, the site plan review having multiple prices based on additional square footage, because that makes perfect sense.
I think so, too.
You know, the only thing that I have a problem with there is that it looks like it's based on a square foot of the building, you know, but I guess you're going to assume there's going to be more parking, there's going to be, you know...
Yeah.
If we built the skyscraper that went straight up, you know, with a small footprint.
So, there's also, you know, so Maynard also has one, theirs is $50, so it's like $500 plus $50 per each residential unit, or 5 cents per square foot of commercial space.
Yeah.
So, that's another one that, that was pretty good. So, those that, kind of, building the, the variable, like $500 base, plus, you know, some, like this one is 5 cents per, per square foot, it doesn't, if it's a smaller building, it doesn't affect it too much.
Yeah.
If you have a very large building, then at that point, it will start affecting.
So, I agree with Danny on, on that concept, you know, having worked for developers as well, that soft costs, I mean, we just, you just build in a lot of soft costs, attorney's fees and things like that, and you pretty much look at it way, right at the beginning, you know, when you're going into a town, what it's going to cost you, so, yeah, we should review it.
Maybe I, I'm going across here, looking at Westford, I want to make sure I understand this, for definitive plan of Westford, the application is 1,900 per lot, so it's 600 per unit, let's leave the linear foot of roadway out, if that's 1,900 for, say, a Stratton Hill, that's 64.6, 64,000 for 30 some, 34 lots, plus 20K, is that really an $85,000 application fee, or is that my misunderstanding that? Or is that 19 upfront plus 20K?
The way I read that is 19 per lot, plus 600 per unit.
Yeah, so, so that, that's, that is straight off of theirs?
So, that would be 64,600 for the 34 lots, plus, since there's two units to two of the lots, it's actually...
There's two units per lot?
There's two, there's two...
There's two duplexes.
Oh, there's, there's two duplexes.
There are two duplexes which may be affordable.
Okay.
So, we end, there's 10% affordability of the four units. So, that, that's an $86,000 application fee.
That's confusing to me, because...
Compared to 9.5, and you know what? The town between us would only be 11K, so I'd be curious if, if, if I'm, I may be misinterpreting this.
So, what I can do is I'll look...
And even if, if I am misinterpreting it, it's still $23,000, because it's 600 times 36 plus 2,000. So, one way or the other, where the low price spread? And, and, and we got to pay for our, we got to pay for our employees, we got to pay for our infrastructure, so.
There's one trick to the Westford thing, I believe, so...
Yeah.
If you build a condo on a single lot...
Yes.
Then you'd be paying per the unit cost. They're trying to bring in something for the unit cost if the lot doesn't get broken up.
Yeah.
But you would have to dig into that deeper and find out.
Exactly, it's, it's, it's something got to be above $80,000 in my, that's a lot.
They like charging for the road, per linear foot.
And, yeah, I'm leaving that out.
Yeah.
And, and, you know...
I think it's a hard balance, because, you know, when we look at the OSRD, are we comparing, so our as-of-right subdivision now in town is an OSRD, and the sub, standard subdivision is a separate special permit, you have to prove to us that you're better off doing an old-fashioned subdivision than an OSRD, and we could consider it. But what I don't know is if these other towns, if the only thing they have is a standard subdivision, so if Westford only does standard subdivision, then consequently, they won't want to get paid for that road.
Exactly.
We're, we're shrinking the road, trying to get open space, so there's a compromise there. It's hard to compare a standard subdivision price with an OSRD price.
Yeah, so most of these towns are...
Do have OSRD.
Were, you know, conventional subdivisions, some of them do have OSRDs and like, so one of them I...
Stowe has an FOSRD.
Yeah.
FOSRD.
Like Stowe.
I know what the F stands for, but...
Yeah, I, I, flexible, I think it is?
Open Space Residential Design.
Yeah.
And they're at 540 plus 55 per lot, which is, you know...
Not a lot of towns have OSRDs yet, I know a lot of them are moving towards that, but not, it's, it's a fairly new kind of movement, going to an OSRDs.
As, as of right, yeah.
Yes, yeah, typically, you see it as special permits. Because that, so, I mean, in my experience, the ones that I've seen are special permit, I've never seen it as by right like we have.
Okay.
I got to imagine also the FOSRD, FOSRD in Stowe probably has the application fee on top of it, because otherwise, that's 2,000 bucks, doesn't matter.
Well, so the two, the 540 is the base application fee, and then for...
55 per lot?
55 per lot.
As opposed to the application fee of 4,300 plus 215 per foot? So, the OSRD for a 34 lot built property is 2,400 bucks, and that's probably...
That's an incentive.
That's, that's an incentive, exactly, yeah. Well, also, with the OSRD, I mean, Stratton Hill doesn't represent a perfect, a perfect OSRD, because they've never changed the number of units, and their bonus units gets them up in the 70s.
Let's not go there for now.
I came across a, a plan for...
We did show us a yield plan.
I, yeah, I know, but I came across the original application for Ledgewood Estates.
Ledgewood, over here, or the one in Stowe?
Ledgewood Estates was the first Stratton Hill, it's, the plans are upstairs.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, 1990-something. I was digging through, looking for stuff on Easy Street.
It was appropriately named.
Yeah.
Attorney Collins told me, he's been, he said he's, he needs one more year, and he's been working on the same property for 40 years.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. It almost got approved in its first, and by the way, the drawings look exactly the same.
That's patience.
They're hand-drawn in, they were hand-drawn in 1990, the machine drawn in 2024.
That's also why he's okay with October 10th.
Yeah.
Exactly.
He's like, no rush.
Wow.
Okay.
He's been the secretary of that place since then.
I think we'll, we'll continue this discussion at the next meeting.
This is really helpful, thank you.
Yeah, it is very helpful, so that Julian, Nathan can, can weigh in.
And if you guys could, you know, maybe email me some of the ones that you specifically like for each of these, so I can kind of give some, some projected costs for those projects.
Okay, great.
It's interesting, we're cheaper than Concord.
And we have the site plan approval, special permit template that Danny's prepared for us, for us to discuss. And Danny, why don't you, you know, just talk, walk through, anything different from what we have now, or maybe that's a good way to talk about it?
Yeah, so, I, I kind of just do a quick overview, so, so I was looking at some of the decisions that we've had, that were given out that we've had, and I felt that a little bit more information needs to be, would be put on these. Just initially, like the site plan approval, where the section is, and where the vote occurred, you know, who made the motion, the vote and the motion passed, same with the site, special permit, kind of just discusses the section as to where special permits and why they have to be approved, and the bylaw. A material section, just so that we have, we track exactly what's been submitted to the board, what's the latest revision, what was the initial revision, kind of information like that, same with review letters and all of that information. The findings, so with this one, this is kind of a typical one, so I wrote those in as to, this is what the board had previously used on another decision for findings on site plan, because site plan review has criteria that needs to be, that needs to be met for the approval, as well as the special permit does, there are six of them. So, I've, I just have those set there, so when we do do the findings, I can go through each of those sections for special permit. For site plan review, I, I wouldn't say we would need to go through each of those sections for the findings, because when you are approving it, we'll, we'll review it, you know, initially, but you don't, we wouldn't have to list those out on there.
Agreed.
And then, so the general conditions, the way I broke it down is, there's a general conditions section, and within the general conditions, there's separate sections for each phase of the, of the project.
Oh, I see.
Can I stop you just a second?
Yes.
So, five general conditions, that includes the path, the one, the sentence above it, right? The following conditions shall be required at the applicant's sole expense, that's not part of the one before it, that's part of this.
No, that's, that's, that's what's following it, correct.
Okay, so I kind of thought you might want to put that under the word general conditions five.
I can do that.
What I want to call everyone's attention to is number six, site plan approval shall lapse after two years from the grant thereof, if not, if a substantial use thereof is not commenced. I like that.
So, that's, that's, that's always how it's been, and it's law.
I thought we missed one on one of the projects.
That's the state law.
They come in, they come in and renew them, like they did at Shop and Save.
If, yeah, so if, if there's a special, site plan that was approved...
I thought, and I'm sorry, I thought there was a controversy about one of the projects where that, what that condition was not part of it, and it kind of stabbed us later on.
I think it was, it was a Board of Appeals decision that was, also had a timeframe on it, but I think COVID changed it.
Oh, yes, because COVID stalled it, like, it was, they stayed it for, I think it was 600 and something days, 640 days.
COVID changed everything.
Yes.
Gave them like automatic extensions.
Yes, exactly. So, the way these general conditions were, it's just pretty boilerplate, you know, just information that we would need for general, like, who's going to be on site, information like that. One of the conditions that I also brought over that were in one of your others was the cease and desist, if they, any deviations from an approved site plan.
We like that.
Could have used that in the past.
We have it, it just gets ignored.
So, that's one of the big things, is this is going to be recorded.
Yeah.
This during pre, a pre-construction meeting must, must occur, and we'll run through all these conditions to make sure everyone understands it, before any CEOs are going to be issued, they're going to have to meet.
We, we also have a certain generation ahead of me who are moving along and not doing these projects anymore. So, we're having less and less of that.
Yeah, so, on this one as well, another, one of the other general conditions, just stormwater. Stormwater management, operation and maintenance, inspection logs, and then 13 was one of, that came out of one of the other decisions that you guys had already given, which was, anything that's private is going to maintain, I mean, is going to stay private, including these items. And that, that was, that's exactly the one we were chatting about earlier.
Yes.
I want to mention to Danny that I'm pretty sure that the way we did this for each decision. Because we had a template in the past. But sometimes that template contained language from a previous decision. So we did go item by item, I think, on these decisions when we did them. And tried to make sure that we weren't carrying something that didn't apply, you know, or whatnot. But we, we did spend some time, um, you know, going over each one individually.
Yeah.
You know, which I guess we'll have to do again.
Well, so you won't have to do that with the general conditions, because the general conditions are gonna be. It's only going to change if you add special conditions. And that's why special conditions has its own section. So there's very rarely a, a point, a time that one of these general conditions won't really apply.
Right.
If they don't apply, then it just, it's there, but it doesn't apply. That's, it is what it is.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we do, we won't go through each general condition to change it. Uh, it's just something that runs with it. Uh, so prior to site work, the big things are making sure that there's, uh, that it's been recorded. Um, making sure that the final set of plans have been given to.
Right, right.
The board, to, to, uh, the building commissioner as well as planning. Um, and then setting up the pre-construction meeting, making sure everyone is there before, uh, site work occurs. Uh, and also a NIPD's permit, making sure that we have record of that.
Did we, is this language in this, number fifteen where it says these plans should indicate compliance with applicable zoning? Is that something we had before or did you put that in?
That's something that I put in.
And I think we had to do that. Get to check on that again, um, I, for instance, if we approve an A and R under eighty-one X or whatever the heck it is, one of those.
Then this doesn't apply.
Okay, so you just.
This, so in eighty-one X, you don't have a decision. Uh, well, in eighty-one X, that.
What's the other one, L?
There's, there's eighty-one.
Too long.
Yeah.
It's, we've, we've had a couple of those where they've come in and because there's two existing houses on a, on a lot prior to zoning.
Mm-hmm.
One of which is not compliant with zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Was still required to A and R the lot under the law.
They just finished building that house.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right.
It's all in, yeah. Yeah, so for an A and R, this would not apply because an A and R does not receive a decision. It's just, you aren't even approving it.
So we do have the authority to say under a site plan or a special permit.
Yes.
That when it leaves our jurisdiction, that it, it needs to comply with zoning.
Yep, unless they have a, something through the zoning board.
Right.
That's what, where it allows it.
I mean, I like the language, I just want to make sure that we all get the thing.
That's appropriate.
Um.
So just to follow up on this for just a second. I think this is really important because when they put a table on the plans, I, I look at those tables pretty closely. And when they put those tables on the plans, there is a zoning section on the table. Where they're supposed to indicate that it does comply with zoning. And that, that's where they indicate in some cases where they're gonna have to go for a variance or whatever the case.
Or a waiver.
So it all, it all ties together, thanks.
Yeah.
And I was just curious, as I read that, pre-existing non-conforming?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the, is that the, uh, is that fit into the.
Well.
Expressly given by the proper authority.
Yeah.
At that point, they would need to go to zoning board. They'd still have to go to the ZBA.
Yeah, okay.
Because it's a, you can't make it more non-conforming.
Exactly. But if, yes, but if they get agreement that they're not making it more conforming, it's a prior proper authority.
Exactly.
And the other protection we have is, and a perfect example is that project on Central Ave where they had to tear the house down in front.
Yep.
Charlie was very careful about issuing the, the timing on that building permit. And he made them go back to the ZBA because they wanted to live in the house on the front while they were building the house.
On the back.
Which would have been two buildings on a lot.
Yeah.
They did get relief from ZBA.
It happened to a lot. I've seen it in a number of towns from the CPAs I've sat on.
Right, but so it, it, the timing worked out okay, but what I'm saying is we have additional protection behind us. Even if, we're not the zoning enforcement, but we still could get that protection behind us. That's all I'm saying.
Good.
Ultimately, you want the building in front to come down in that situation.
Yeah, and, and so even when you have a non-conforming lot, something, a non-conformity. Typically, you go to zoning board first anyways. To make sure you're gonna be able to get that anyways.
It's not always what happens.
No, I agree with you, but that would be something I would advise.
We don't have one on twenty-five, twenty-seven Harvard, do we? Yeah. I'm so glad Danny is here to take on that project now.
I thought, you know, one of the things that really.
Excellent.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt your.
Go ahead, go ahead.
To me, one of the most interesting sections of this was the last one, the modification of plans. I think that's a, a new thing, right?
Yeah, that's something new that, uh, I carried over from Salisbury that I had in my decisions over there. Uh, this is just something for you guys to mull over and see.
That's good.
Because substantial can be different to.
Yep.
You know, to everyone.
You know, what I like about this is that there's a certain specificity about what the issues are. But there's a lot of leeway for us in determining, using our judgment for what substantial is. And I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I think the applicants' representatives understand what these, what really, this really means. So they should, it should fit right in.
And I, I was, as I read this, I was thinking about what projects have we seen recently? The fire station. As a group, we've come up with lots of ways to make that work.
Right.
Yeah.
As a, as a board. You didn't have to sit through it, you're lucky. But you really, it's a pre-existing non-conforming. And there's not, in many cases, was it a minor or is it a major? What is it? And because it's historic, part of the building is historical, you got, you gotta be flexible.
Yep.
Yeah.
I thought the one I liked the most was thirty-four.
Oh, yeah?
After occupancy.
Yes.
The applicant or future owner should have the responsibility of maintaining or replacing the balcony or landscaping stormwater septic sign. I'm not sure about septic, should be sewage, whatever.
It's just something that's.
signage and lighting is indicated in the plans. It shall be required to properly implement the operation and maintenance. So when this gets, when, when the decision gets recorded and somebody buys it and their attorney reads this. He should be able to tell the new owner that, hey, wait a minute. You know, he doesn't bump by this place and let it go, you have to keep it up.
Wait, and.
What? No, yes, no?
Central Ave, the detention basin in front.
Silver grown.
Number seven, Central Ave. Um, I'm bringing it up, when we get to the general section. Because, um, I believe they have an O and M where they have to maintain it. And once again, it has been allowed to go.
Yeah, but they, they'll catch up.
Yeah. And, and that's also why condition, well, conditions, uh, nine through twelve are included in this.
Exactly.
But, but enforcement is a challenge?
Mm-hmm.
Of course it is.
Yeah, I was.
Always.
It, it's, it, and you, you want compliance because you never want to have to enforce.
Mm-hmm.
And that was why the stormwater management was coming in-house for a fee. Because enforcement is much harder. And that's why when I called you, but when we got talking about the Easy Street, oh yeah, they've been in compliance forever because we've been doing it. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And so, uh, I, I was talking to Ken about this, about as-built being required. In, in previous decisions, they, it doesn't state that. In our regulations, it does. So I included that in.
Oh, good.
Condition number thirty-three. Uh, so prior to an issuance of any certificate of, certificate of occupancy. So if, and the way I have it built in, it allows so that if you're coming for your first certificate of occupancy. And say it's a large development with several houses, you need an as-built showing as to date of the, of when you're submitting for that first occupancy.
Let me ask you, so that's an as-built for the, uh, domicile or building that the domicile's in? As opposed to the as-built for all the site work too?
No.
Because in many situations, in a larger development, we all know, binder goes down, but they don't taco. Especially with our, um, weather here. They may not taco for a year or so later. So as-built are kind of hard to come up with. So.
How do you handle that?
That's why this condition, they'll know ahead of time.
Okay. Okay.
Because we, we have received as, no, it was a project I worked on.
Well, the trick here is the.
We had to go back out and do as-built for the, with GIS because they had not done the as-built. So it's, it's not something in air, it's another project.
And that's why this thing is, I have it writ, the way it's written. It, it builds in, if you're, you know, say you have three lots of the twenty lots that you've built. You know, you're, you need to show whatever utilities are in at that present time that you're going for COs.
Got it.
I like it.
You need to include everything.
So it doesn't have to be the entire project? I got it.
It's just what is existing on site. As it's technically an interim as.
If it's a typical, if it's a typical phased development.
Yep.
Which is oftentimes what they'll do.
Yes.
Build a model, build a couple, make the next phase, make the next, and I, Stratton Hill is gonna be phased.
Yes.
He's not gonna build thirty-four at the same time, he builds three or four a year, he said. So it's the as-built for what's existing then. So we can't have, we, so my expectation that all of the underground work is done everywhere. See, my, in my mind, as-built is the finished project.
It is a finished project.
Is the finished project.
But he's got it, he's got it.
It's got it in such a way that it's incrementally will become the finished project. So if the project is thirty percent complete and, and stops for whatever reason, we have the as-built for that. Got it.
So again, did you write this, or did you get it from somewhere else or?
So I, I took this out of our, at least the first.
Yeah.
Uh, portion of it where it's, when, the first sentence, I took that out of our rules and regs.
Okay.
And then the second one, I added in.
Got it.
So the only thing I was gonna, actually, we bring it up now, I guess we're working on it, right? So I was gonna say in the second one, that we could put something in there about the as-built. And then the wording, somewhere in compliance with DPW standards. So the DPW in essence is gonna tell us that we're, we're accepting this section.
Yeah.
As-built for this particular group of homes. So we don't have to guess if the, if DPW does it. And they, if the BPW says that this will work. You know, for these three houses or whatever.
So this brings something.
In a phased project, I don't know if we need to put the word phasing in there or something like.
This brings something to mind. If a project builds a road to the DPW standards with the expectation that the road will be.
Town.
Town road eventually at some point in the future.
Yeah.
If a project starts, it's thirty percent. The rest of the road isn't built. But if it's built in compliance to DPW standards, does a town, is it automatically accepted? Or does it still have to go through, okay, that's all.
Nope.
It still has to go through the acceptance process. I'm just thinking it through, because I hadn't thought about it until you said that.
Go through the acceptance, yeah.
Yeah, it has, has to go through the acceptance.
Okay.
Has to go to you, town meeting.
Has to go to the town meeting, not me. I just get to stand there.
I'm just looking for something maybe in that second.
Yeah, so like a DPW standard.
Some kind of a inspection by DPW, you know, something along those lines.
Yeah, so I'm going to.
And it may be in our subdivision regulations already.
And have you shared this with them?
Cause we have, we have standards in, in the subdivision regulations that we worked on.
Yes.
For all the road construction.
Yes, yep.
So it may be there already. And we're not talking about subdivision here actually, are we?
Yeah, no, we're not. But.
So we're actually talking.
A lot of these general conditions will.
Potentially work, yeah.
Will work for subdivisions.
This is really for us to think about for a site plan.
Mm-hmm. And, and I know you were gonna ask if I sent it to Dan, so I actually talked with Dan about this.
I saw the CC at the bottom, but I also saw draft on it, so.
Yeah, so this is, I, I, Dan is going to look at this and let me know if he's got any additional. So specifically, uh, uh, in, um, speaking with him, we were talking about SWIP inspections.
Yep.
Uh, so, and I actually spoke with Heather about this. We, we haven't really been receiving them very, you know? And it's hard for us to, to chase after people and, and make sure that it's, it was occurring. So it's a condition now that it has to be submitted to the, um, town planner, conservation agent. And as well as to the DP, it'll be to the DPW, I need to add.
And.
Cause I spoke to him today and he said yes.
And if you take a look at thirty, the sentence ends without being completed.
Yeah, he's got something to add there.
I, I'm sure you have the words, don't worry about it.
Okay.
This should be basically, if applicable, the SWIP. Cause there'll be projects that it doesn't apply to.
Unless it's under an acre.
Yeah, exactly.
It, so if you don't have a NIPD's, you're, that's why it says these inspection reports are required by a NIPD's permit.
Yeah.
Um, so, and that, if not adhered to, I need to.
Whatever.
But yes, that, that's a requirement of your NIPD's permit.
Yeah, I know it is, yeah.
And so, uh, there are some projects that don't require NIPD's permits. So yes, at that point.
Yeah.
At, we can.
Waive it, whatever.
We can waive that.
And won't apply.
Yeah, just, we'll just say it does not apply.
Yeah, I found one tiny thing too, at number twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
It says stated in condition twenty-six.
Oh.
I think it's supposed to be twenty-three.
Yep.
Thank you, just help you out, Dan.
Yes. And so that is always.
I'm sorry.
There's always one numbering that you find in every document.
It's so good as that.
The same thing with a set of drawings.
I know, I know.
You have to have good eyes for that.
And a proofreader, proofreader.
And, and our hours of operation, we gotta change those.
So.
Brutal.
They're actually pretty, well, except for the seven PM.
Yeah.
Most towns that I've seen, it's five PM.
Yep.
Um, but the rest, you guys were pretty, I mean, it's pretty, pretty spot on with, with most towns.
The only, the only comment I have regarding modification of plans is. Do you think that we need to assign, uh, a numbers? Another say modification, minor modification, like less than X percentage of land or something? Or is that just way too complicated to get into to put?
I think, I think it gets, because that percentage on a big property, it's, it's, if, say if you say ten percent. On a big property, that's a lot. And then it kind of sets too high of a standard for you to say, oh, well, that's not minor or it is major, you know? That's why I kind of leave it as.
I just want to be sure that we're not open to, uh, legal challenges and so, you know, but.
It's, it's up to, it's left to the discretion of the board. And that's how the condition is written. So that, that exact reason is not, doesn't pop up.